Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxie. I'm calling to order this June 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Tongonoxie City Council. Conatyton, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon is absent. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is the approval of minutes, in which we go over the minutes from the previous meeting, which was May 19th. Does anyone have any conversation about the minutes, or is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda, in which we review the bill payments from the previous period. Are there any questions regarding the bill payments this period, or do I have a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion we approve the bills as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item four on the agenda is old business. Nothing is listed. This is also the time when people who would like to address the body, they sign up before the deadline. They're able to speak for three minutes to the body. Did we have anyone sign up before the meeting today, before the deadline today?
Not before the meeting, Mayor. We do have Neil Brawley here tonight, who'd like to address the council.
Would you like to have your three minutes tonight, or next week? Okay, let's go.
My name's Neil Brawley. I'm a resident of Tongonoxie. I live on West Sycamore Street. I addressed the council, you weren't here that night, Mayor, but I addressed the council about that speed limit. I've talked to George Brockovich about the speed limit. I've gone up and down that street three times on foot. Talked to 43 people, gained their signatures. Speed limit on that street's too fast. Now, I've been informed by George and others now that the state has a statute that requires residential streets to be 30 miles an hour. In my belief, 30 miles an hour is much too high on that street. There are a lot of young children that play ball. The ball goes out in the street, and then not a nanosecond later, there's a kid shooting after that ball. And there's traffic on the street, and there are cars parked on both sides of the street. The street is like a snake, and it's too fast. And these 40, 43 people agree with me as well. And I know there are other communities, Lawrence, for example. I've got photographs of two streets in Lawrence. These are on the, you know, west of Massachusetts Street, where those state streets are, 20 mile an hour speed limit in there. Those streets are wider and straighter than West Sycamore. And I am not out for the city to spend $7,500, or $5,000, or any amount of money for a traffic study. I think that good common sense is enough to put up a 20 mile an hour speed limit on that street. But there are a few people that go 30 miles an hour or more up and down that street. So, that's my pitch tonight. George has a copy of my letter and the signatures, and I'd just like to see the city do something to reduce the speed limit on that street. And I, I think the state really needs to look at the statute on not letting people apply good judgment on how fast the speed limit should be on the street. So, thank you all for your time, and, you know, hopefully, you'll agree with me and the 42 other people on that street that think the speed limit's too high.
I appreciate you coming and speaking to the body tonight. I appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, are we going to discuss that, or no, sir?
If you'd like to, sure.
I would. I, I took the opportunity to drive down that street the night that you came by, and I agree with you, that I think that I would not drive 30 miles an hour on the street. It's essentially a dead end. It is a dead end, and not a through road. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the rules. And so, but I certainly share the sentiments of you and the people who signed it, that I think I would rather err on the side of safety and see that lowered if possible. And that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Partridge, does anyone else have any comments?
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Partridge, I live on the corner next to a four-way stop, and I like to sit out in the front yard, just enjoy the sound of the birds. And there is a four-way stop sign there, and, you know, what percentage of people read that sign and stop at that sign? Get, just guess what percentage of people stop at that, come to a complete stop at that sign?
I plead the fifth, since I lived down that road.
Probably 3% of people read that sign and stop at that sign. That's my only comment.
Did you have something, Mr. Donnelly?
Well, is, is, is part of the issue the street parking? Could you limit street parking, or eliminate street parking, and resolve the issue?
I don't think it would resolve the issue. It might reduce the issue some. I just think 30 miles an hour is too fast on that street, the length of it, the curvature of it, and the number of children that are playing in there, especially, you know, hours of the day like this. I mean, in the middle of school day, it's probably not quite the problem, but there are times of day when it's definitely a problem when there are young children there. I don't have young children who live there. I just know that there's going to be an accident someday, but I don't know when, and I don't know who it happens to, but if people drive up and down that road fast, and 30 miles fast, that's 44 feet every second. That's like across this room every second. That's pretty fast. Takes three quarters of a second reaction time to get that foot off the gas pedal and another brake. That's 33 feet. You might not have 33 feet, and still be able to stop.
Matt, there's a, a process that we go through, and we approve that, and you know that. But I, I think one of the concerns that I would have is that we're going to get down to every single street in Tongonoxie. We can, where do you start? Where do you stop? And we go through the process for a reason. And if this one is 20, and then Third Street is 18, and Stone Creek is 14, are we going to get into that process?
Once I lived in a neighborhood in East Lawrence, and people were complaining about, I was the Neighborhood Association president, and people were complaining about the terrible streets and all the potholes. And then they were also complaining about how fast people went through the neighborhood. And I said, "Let's just dig some more potholes, and they'll slow right down." So, maybe. I'm not suggesting you dig potholes. That was a joke.
I, to the point that it is not a through street, it's also a pretty isolated neighborhood.
Yeah, I would guess 99.9% of the traffic is people who live on that street.
Yeah, I drove through it, too. I had a hard time getting, figuring out how to, I have a friend who lives there, but I've been there like once.
And so, it, it, it does seem that it would be pretty isolated.
Here's what I'll say, to answer your point, Ms. Donnelly. I, I read Board of Minutes of cities very often, and I've seen that argument a lot in the minutes of cities. Well, if we make an exception for you. I have probably, and I'll be honest, I have never seen that situation actually occur, where somebody made a one-off, changed something for a thing, and then that became an epidemic of people filing. Let's be realistic. That's just not going to occur. It isn't. But I, processes do have to be followed. The law, of course, has to be followed. So, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the rules, so I can't pretend to have a solution, and that makes it convenient for me. But I'll just say, nobody, if you drive down the road, you, no one should be driving 30 miles an hour down that road. That just makes common sense. I understand why 43 people signed the petition.
Mayor, if I could just add a few comments. So, after the last time Mr. Brawley addressed the council, and I replied back to him in an email, I think in late, late April, after I had a chance to confer with both the city engineer, the city traffic engineer, and the police department. So, essentially, in the state of Kansas, you know, there's standard traffic ordinances, and the city has the opportunity to opt out of certain portions of that. What, as it relates to the speed limit, in Kansas, residential areas are 30 miles an hour, in quotes, unless posted otherwise. So, there's limited opportunities to change those. The first comes when subdivisions are platted, and if we understand that there's narrow streets and conditions present, then as the plat is accepted, there could be things like limiting the speed limit. However, once you don't, if you don't opt out of that, the statute regard, covering this is very specific, and it says it requires a traffic study be completed to determine if conditions exist. So, I asked A for a cost estimate for a traffic study, and we believe that's going to be in the neighborhood of $7,500. But I also took the time to walk through with the traffic engineer to say, "Well, what conditions need to be present, and would those exist in this neighborhood?" And as we walked through an aerial photo of the neighborhood, as well as some Google street images, and I've driven through that neighborhood, I drove through there today, actually, on a different matter. It is a one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhood, no through streets. The streets, from a design standpoint, are serpentine in nature, which apparently is an engineering term, meaning that that's curves are designed to slow traffic naturally, and that there are sidewalks in existence. So, in his opinion, some of the major factors that would contribute to a traffic study finding conditions that warrant a lower speed limit may not exist there. But then I also asked the police department if they had had any complaints of speeding, whether it was in the neighborhood, on that section of Smiley Road, or if we've had any enforcement issues. And to date, we haven't. And, and so, again, I don't think those are factors that are end-all, be-all if somebody wants to take a look and do something. The other thing I offered to Mr. Brawley was that this year, the House, the Kansas House, considered a bill that would allow cities that, under that scenario, the 30 mile an hour residential cities to reduce that to 25 miles an hour without requiring the traffic study. So, that made it out of committee. I think it made it through the House, but it didn't get considered by the other side of the legislature. So, one thing I suggested is perhaps we can wait and see what happens next year, and if they reduce that. Now, the, the grand warning, and I think some of the discussion here has been tonight, two things about posted speed limits. They work the best when there's uniformity and consistency, and we see that a lot in municipal court. Well, that street had 30 miles an hour, but this street didn't have a stop sign, so I wasn't really sure what the speed limit was. And so, we, we hear those arguments all the time. And without wanting to ask for additional revenue to go put a speed limit sign in every possible location to avoid those kinds of arguments in municipal court, there, there's, there is definitely a strategy to staying consistent. And there's a reason that they're listed this way in standard traffic ordinances. The second part being, there is, I believe, about eight acres that's in the north, northwest corner of that property that we've worked with a developer in recent years to plat. And there's been a final plat, I believe, approved for that, but the developer has not commenced with construction. I believe it adds 30 houses in that area. So, one thing I suggested to Mr. Brawley tonight is, short of spending $7,500 for a traffic study that may not give us any information that would suggest we should immediately lower the speed limit there, is let's see, as this new development commences and construction activates, that perhaps adding 40 new residences to a one-way-in, one-way-out would be one of those conditions that warrants reexamining the posted speed limit. And, and so, I, I feel like there's a couple of options there, well, at least three. Do the traffic study, wait to see if the legislature acts upon what the House already took action on, or see what this new development proposes. But I, I think those are three options that we can look at. Now, if we decide to go with the traffic study, what I suggested to Mr. Brawley was that, I believe, July 7th, I, I didn't have the date when I left you a message before, but July 7th is when we're going to consider community funding requests, and that we would certainly, as we develop and build a budget for next year, regardless of if the legislature takes any other action, that we could perhaps build this cost to do the traffic study. Maybe some conditions change between then and now, and then, I guess that could be the fourth option. Come for the July 7th meeting, or just let staff know that that is a neighborhood request from Timber Hills, and, and see if we can't build that into the budget to do the traffic study during 2026.
Okay. We're not done talking about this, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk it over a lot.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I just, I do have a clarifying question. What are the two streets in Lawrence that you took photos of?
I'm afraid you're going to ask me that.
One of them looked like it was a brick street, wasn't it?
One, one is, I can leave a picture for you.
Do you have, are the names on the photos?
I mean, one of them has a.
The street sign. Yeah, thank you. I live.
Just west, they're western Massachusetts.
Oh, yeah. I see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. New business?
Okay. Moving on to new business. Item A, consider approval of 2025 fireworks sales permit applications. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. The council packet includes an agenda statement and attachments inclusive of the two applications for fireworks sales permits. We had two requests last year from these same two vendors, and in previous years, we've had as many as four or five within the city limits. The application packet includes a lot of detailed information about their tax status with the state, other details about the location, but I'll just generally summarize it as the two locations being the parking lot of Brothers Grocery Store, and the parking lot of the former Sutton Coleman Building that now houses Lynch Real Estate and some other different tenants in that structure. These two locations have been evaluated by our fire chief, both this year and in past years, and our fire chief did not offer any comments of concern or note for the council in deciding whether or not to approve these applications. As a quick reminder, these applications do have to be approved before sales can commence, so we have one other meeting opportunity that would come before the deadline for the commencement of discharge and, and sales of fireworks in the city limits. Staff are happy to take any questions you might have, but we do recommend approval of this item without further comment.
I have no questions. Counsel, do you have anything to add, ask? If not, I would accept a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion we approve the 2025 fireworks sales permits for Anthony R. Miller and Garrett's Worldwide Enterprise LLC as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item B.
Mayor, can I interject just one item real quick? I'm sorry to interrupt. As a follow-up to that item, again, as Mr. Porter explained, these are for permits issued within the city. The county doesn't have the same guidelines or limitations that we do. And in fact, the state, this last year, basically said you could sell it year-round, but you had to sell out of a permanent structure, so you can't erect a tent. So, it, the county staff did reach out to us, because there is a vendor that sets up literally across the street from city limits, and so, we had indicated to the county staff our concern that, over the confusion it would create if the county was going to allow sales outside of, because our, our window for sales and discharge is the same. And so, it's just, in, in talking with the PD, and I think in years past, we've certainly heard right before the holiday and right after from concerned folks, or folks that have PTSD, that they just hate the fact that we discharge, or folks whose pets are terrified, or whose kids don't like it. And so, anyway, I just wanted you to be aware that the potential could be that the county's going to grant a permit that's going to be across the street from the city, and PD's going to have to be, do enforcement and explanation at some level of like, "Well, that's true. You legally bought it in the county, but you illegally discharged it within city limits, if it's outside the timeframe." So, I, I apologize for interrupting, Mayor. I just wanted to offer that point.
That's okay. Thank you. We voted, right? I've lost track.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item C. Consider RFP, Request for Proposal Approval for 2025 Sanitary Sewer Project for 2440 and East Second and Third Street. Mr. Porter?
Mayor, I'm going to back up, if that's all right, to item B, if that's okay. We haven't voted on that item. Would that be all right with you?
Oh, I am sorry. I'm all off my game tonight.
No problem.
All right. Item B, Resolution 062501, Consider Approval of Two-Year Extension Agreement with Honey Creek Recycling for Solid Waste and Recycling Services Provision. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is, is a, a regular item on our agenda in the past almost 20 years now. The city has worked with Honey Creek Disposal for solid waste services dating back to 2008, and for recycling, which is a bi-weekly optional service since 2014 originally. At that time, I think Mr. Donnelly was on the city council, and probably remembers some of the debate about whether to make recycling mandatory, or, or leave it as a voluntary elective service. And some of the recaps of those discussions are certainly interesting to look at and, and remember, I guess. But what we've had in place since 2014 is, again, that voluntary recycling and mandatory solid waste trash service for all residential properties within the city limits. We have a current contract with Honey Creek that allows in two-year increments, extension of the contract, and we've undertaken that effort dating back to at least 2017, and I'm not certain exactly prior to that period. Since 2008, we have had one increase to the trash rate charged by Honey Creek, and that was in 2019, 75 cents per month, per, per unit for trash. And we've had one rate increase for recycling service of 50 cents per, per unit, per month, for people who elected that service. We have a, a strong relationship with Honey Creek, and I think we can all attest, at city hall at least, that the, the stories we hear about other providers for contracted trash and recycling removal, and their relationship with cities, is, is negative in contrast to our own with Honey Creek. They're very responsive. We have very few limited complaints, and typically, evaluation of technology, like video review, that they take camera photos as they drive down our streets and dump bins at, at properties. They do an outstanding job, and if they make errors, they correct them in a very prompt manner. And so, we're happy to report that in the last two-year period, there have been continued good performance or great performance in those regards. What they've proposed for us in a letter that's included in the packet is a rate increase charged to the city. And it's important to distinguish, the rates charged by Honey Creek to the city differ from the utility rates that the city charges to customers. We operate a utility billing financial system. We pay printing costs, and, and we have other general administrative support involved in the city's role as being the billing provider for this service. Although we don't perform the trash and recycling collection, there does need to be some recapturing of that cost. So, what, what I would highlight initially is that the proposed renewal terms, which would take effect in November, November 1 of this year, for the city and Honey Creek, include a $2 a month increase for trash service, and a $1 a month increase for the recycling service. So, the rates would increase from $13.50 a month for trash to $15.50, and $3.50 a month, I'm sorry, $4.50 a month for recycling to $5.50 a month. When you average in the rate of inflation over the period just since 2019, but in particular, going back to the establishment of this agreement, that rate proposal seems workable and reasonable. One other thing to consider is, again, knowing that the city does have some increased rate charged to customers for this service, both, the, the trash rate currently charged by the city is $16 a month, and that could slightly increase or be left alone as potential options. And as we set our 2026 budget, our utility rates will be an aspect of that that we identify. So, in the, in the short term, from November to December of 2025, any increase like this in the solid waste trash cost is easily able to be accommodated. We obviously then have different decisions in 2026 of what we do with utility rates. Recycling costs, though, we, we currently charge $4.50 a month, and we will be charged $5.50 a month for the cost from Honey Creek. So, that's an area where staff will recommend as part of the 2026 adopted budget that we certainly look at raising those utility rates to account for the cost of service provision. One thing I wanted to highlight, too, just for your awareness, the current customer base for the city is a little less than 2,200 customers of a residential nature. They're the large majority of our utility customers. They out, outpace the commercial customer base pretty handily. And about 31% of people now participate in the voluntary recycling program. That's up from, I think, when, when George and I started working with the city a little over seven years ago, that was down in the 17 to 19% range most months, so we haven't quite doubled that, but we've seen a pretty significant increase a, as the time has gone on in participation in that voluntary service. We also have about 21% of our customers that choose to have an extra container, whether that be trash or recycling, and Honey Creek has not proposed changes to the rates for that service, nor for the bag tags or the special pickups for bulk items. So, all in all, they're asking for a relatively modest increase, and one that the city will be able to accommodate without too many issues. Staff did prepare the draft resolution. The city attorneys reviewed and actually prepared that in its entirety, and we don't have any other comments about that, or issues with that to report. So, we'd be happy to take your questions and, and take your feedback on this item.
I have nothing. Questions? Counsel?
So, in the budget process, you'll present the detail on what we charge, how much? Because there is overhead, I understand.
Yep.
But we'll see that. And if we say no on this, we're going to have to go find another dump.
Certainly.
And our contract runs through Halloween?
That's right.
And so, will the rate that they're charging us take effect November 1st?
It does.
Okay.
I would say to the public that I recycle, and my trash volume reduced significantly. And if you do the math, it's cheaper to have recycle and trash than two trash bins.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we have two recycling and just one.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah, Jake.
Anyway, just.
I'll make a motion if you're ready.
We have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 062501 approving a two-year extension contract agreement with Honey Creek Recycling for Solid Waste and Recycling Services.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Onward to item C, as presented earlier. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is actually a recurring item on your agenda. And tonight, what's being requested for this project, which as a reminder, is a combination of slip lining, pipe bursting, and open trench replacement of sewer, established sewer, sanitary sewer mains, generally in the vicinity of the Tongonoxie Public Library between 2440 and, and Green Street, and areas previously identified by CCTV inspection. This project has gone through a lengthy process that included public input and public outreach to homeowners in some of the project areas. We're working with them still to finalize the easements being proposed for clarification of the project workspace in one corridor between Second and Third Street that was previously approved in April by the city council for the acceptance of those easements. But to not delay this project and to get it on the ground, what's being requested tonight is approval of the issuance of an RFP that's found in great detail in the agenda packet and in the link in the agenda statement. It might set a record for our largest item in a long time. So, so apologies for that, but our partners at BG Consultants have developed those specifications, and they'll advertise this issuance on Drexel, which is an online bidding opportunity platform. That is also something that is being advertised in the city newspaper in accordance with our procurement policy and on our city website. And so, starting tomorrow with this approval, we would move forward with those publications, and then bring back a proposed contract award at a later date for your consideration. Staff, don't have any other updates on the project unless you have questions in particular.
Okay. Any questions, Counsel?
One for city attorney. We generally don't see contracts that have strike-throughs and. One for city attorney. We generally don't see contracts that have strike-throughs and highlights. We normally see the final. Are these your strike-throughs, or there's a ton of them in here?
These are the bid documents. Uh, those are changes from the standard template from BG Consultants for this project's case. Um, so they...
We generally don't see the strike-throughs. Don't you? That's what makes it, it's just different.
Yeah. I believe what they use is a standard template, um, bid opportunity that's used for like projects using loan funding, uh, financing through federal programs. And so these are just adjustments to sort of simplify that to our, um, purposes. But we can definitely clean that up when we post it as well. I think they maybe left it in for some of the numbering, because if you strike like item B and you have a C and D, you'll mess up the whole document.
Process first.
Yep. There's some curious looks to it, definitely.
I'd hate to delay this, but would you prefer a cleaner copy, Mr. Donnelly?
It's, staff and attorney say we're good to go?
We're good. Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Then I would accept a motion.
I'll move that we approve the request for proposal for two thousand twenty-five sanitary sewer project for twenty-four forty and East Second and Third Street.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item six on the agenda is the city manager agenda. Mr. Bruckovich, did you have anything?
I don't have any additional items. We do have the April financial report, which Mr. Porter can deliver if you're ready.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the April financial report reflects, uh, one-third of our fiscal year being completed as of the end of April, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, one thing of note that we wanted to highlight was that in April of two thousand and twenty-five, we closed out our EDA grant for the, uh, water tower construction project at the Tonganoxie Business Park. We were thrilled to have reached the finish line with that, and we did collect just over one-point-five million in grant funds from that program. And as you'll remember, that was delayed in some part due to, um, uncertainties with the financial workings of, uh, the federal government, um, this earlier in two thousand and twenty-five. And so we're happy to see that that final grant remittance was provided to the city and our closeout documents were completed. Um, we're, we're currently working on our audit for two thousand and twenty-four, and, um, we've advised our auditors of this development. And, um, because the program funds in two thousand and twenty-four did not reach the major program threshold, there will not be a requirement for a single audit process for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, which is a positive outcome for the city. Um, we are looking also at, um, the RHID payments from the county. And as a reminder, um, we receive RHID proceeds for those tax districts. There are three in the city. Um, when property taxpayers pay their property taxes in full in those districts, the city receives the funds. And upon, um, confirmation that they're correct or as correct as we can affirm, we repay the appropriate share of those funds to the developers according to the terms of those agreements. Um, a kind of curious case, in twenty, in, in this year, in, in April, the county sent us a check um, equal to the check we received in late, uh, I'm sorry, in, um, two thousand and twenty-four for those RHID districts. And in essence, what we believed occurred is an error at the county where a payment was generated, um, uh, mistakenly to the city. And so in essence, we've been pre-funded property tax receipts, um, for the second half of payments due. So the property taxpayers paid either all or half their taxes in December. The city got our first check in January for those proceeds. And then the city received a second check in April, although those taxpayers hadn't paid yet. They will pay in May. And so we've discussed this with the county clerk and the county treasurer's staff, made sure we documented what happened, um, talked to, uh, our auditors to make sure we won't encounter issues. And we believe that everything's, um, in proper order. If we were to take no action now, retain those funds, and then, once the county confirms those payments have been made, issue those payments to the developers. But if you'll notice, in the, uh, in this fund balance summaries, the RHID funds all show a tremendous change in fund balance from the prior period. And the reason for that is this circumstance, that in essence, we were pre-funded, um, RHID proceeds, uh, by the county. There really isn't a negative impact on the city, other than we just need to be very cautious and not inappropriately distribute those funds to the, to the developers in these cases. But just sort of an app, uh, oddity that we wanted to make you aware of in case you noticed that in the fund balance section of the report in particular.
Did you say that the amounts were the same from the previous? Do you think that's accurate?
It may or may not turn out to be so. I mean, normally, people pay half and then the other half.
Right. And then we had, because we had new RHID online at the end of the year that was not on the year before.
But the tax bills were set by January one of two thousand and twenty-four valuation, uh, when it was affirmed. So those bills, it's bills due, not new tax bills. So i- it looks back to January one of twenty-four to determine those bills. Even though new value got added later, that'll be revenue we collect next year.
I'd expect any difference to be immaterial. Be very trivial.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Uh, just one point real quick. Uh, Mr. Porter did a great job on all of that, but I want to talk real quick about the EDA grant. So, um, it, and it was fantastic to close that out and that the, the federal funds that were promised to us were delivered. Um, we, just in time too, for a report that is due to the EDA every, in three-year intervals with year three, year six, and year nine being due. And one of the things that we have to report is, what's the capital investment in the area that benefited from this piece of in- infrastructure and how many jobs either created or retained? And so we submitted that data to, uh, the agency that's helping us submit these documents. And I'm, I'm happy to say that, uh, between the three companies reporting just at the Tonganoxie Business Park, we have in excess of five-hundred-and-seven million dollars of private capital investment, over a hundred and fifty high-paying jobs with good benefits, uh, created in that park. Um, and so I, I would hope that regardless of the administration of when we got a grant and who we're reporting to now, that they would be pretty impressed. That's a hell of a return for a one-point-five-million-dollar grant. So, thanks. Thank you.
Anything more?
No other items of note this month, but happy to take any questions if you have.
Any questions, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all you need to put this together.
All right. Moving on to the city attorney agenda. Ms. Kirstalich?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Thank you. I wanted to give you all an update on the SRF loan for the wastewater treatment plant. There was a requirement, you know, after council approved the ordinance authorizing that loan agreement, there was a requirement for an opinion of the municipality's council. I had submitted that into the internal committee at the firm. Um, they proposed some changes, worked with KDHE on that, finally got approval. Um, so I delivered the original signed copy to Dan today. So we'll be off to the races on that.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Mayor, pro-tem agenda. Ms. Stevens?
I have no items tonight. Thank you.
All right. Uh, city council agenda? Anything, Counsel? Not seeing anything.
Great dog park grand opening.
Thank you.
Wasn't it?
Well-attended, and, uh, weather was nice and the, the, the grass was dry.
Yeah, it was.
Bootarp broke on one end.
Ready?
Oh, my ram.
Yeah.
Bummer.
It's terrible.
Oh, yeah.
Kent's, Kent's gone, but the, one of the water fountains needs fixed, but they said it was gonna be fixed.
They said the park is, is on order.
Right.
Uh, Mayor agenda, I have nothing else, uh, which leaves you. Mr. Dale?
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
He's not here today.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. See you in a couple of weeks.